Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council Meeting for February 27th here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For all those that are able to please rise for a moment of silence and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own.
Next is Meeting Minutes. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like for approval of City Council Meeting Minutes, which are none for Category A but for Category B, acceptance of Board and Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes, be one through eight.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry six to zero with Councilmember Arredondo's savage absent. All right. Next is Reports and Announcements. I only have one announcement. Per the Tempe City Charter, the City Council will be voting tonight to approve appointments for the Desert Conservation Board as of the regular, that is on the regular meeting agenda. This appointment is listed under Item 5A1, just so everyone knows. And with that, I will now turn to our City Manager, Mr. Ching. You have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of staff presentations tonight, one regarding building safety year and review.
Thank you, Andrew, Mayor, Council. Thanks for a couple of minutes tonight. I want to introduce you to what is essentially a new team heading up the building safety area. Over the last year, we have had about 80 years or so worth of experience walk out the door for retirements. And while we were happy to let those folks ride off into the sunset, we were left with a little bit of a transition period. And so, the folks that I have behind me here, which I will introduce in a moment, have been really helpful in trying to figure out where we were at, where we needed to go. And we've had some tremendous success already in their short tenure. So, in a moment, I'll turn it over to them and they can share some of that news with you and some of the plans they have for 2020. But I do just want to introduce them. See the names on the screen here? We have Donna Sullivan Hancock, who is still doing her engineering job, running that engineering group, but is the acting deputy director in place of Chris Thompson, who you all know. We have here Dino Ocardo, who is the manager of the plan review function and also serving as the building official. And we have, here we can stand up, Susan Gredo, who was just recently, like within a week or so, hired to run the permit center. We have Douglas Donald, who's probably the longest tenured now, who's the head of the building inspection unit. And then we have Josh Rutherford, who's taken over for Lisa and running the project assistance team. So, most of them are familiar faces relatively, but they've all moved up and taken a leadership role and are doing a great job. This gentleman here is new to the city and has really found his way quickly and has helped me a tremendous amount. So, I'll turn it over to Donna to share some news with you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, year in review. Well, thank you, Chad, Mayor and Council. There's been a lot of flux in building safety this year, and part of that has been our tenured managers leaving. And also, we've had several employees have tried on jobs, oh, I'm sorry, have tried on jobs in the form of temporary duty. It's had its challenges, but ultimately, it's provided growth and development for the employees that participate. So, we see that as kind of a good thing. And because of our challenges here, we'd really like to take this opportunity to thank our Director Chad Weaver. Without his leadership and support, it was really helpful while we were getting our feet under us. So, we appreciate that, Chad. Also, metrics. So, we have, since about 2018, we have been gathering local metrics that are meaningful to us. And now, we have about a two-year block, so it's been very helpful. The new team is now using that information to drive our decision-making. So, that's our metrics. Then, I wanted to show you these. You may have seen these if you've been seeing some of our supplemental. They'll look familiar to you. We wanted to highlight some of the things that we think are kind of fun as to what we've done and some of the things we, you know, some of our numbers. So, in 2019, circled along the bottom, we've got total customers served at our permit center, 19,646 in 2019. So, we think that's pretty good. 2,065 plan checks completed. Let's see, over a billion dollars in evaluation permitted, 7.8 million in fees collected, and 3,925 permits issued, and about 90,000, a little bit over, of inspections performed. So, you'll be seeing these numbers on and off. You'll see them in our supplementals. We had our technology and training supplemental and also our seed money supplemental. So, this doesn't, those are really critical to our operation, and so, we hope that we can get your support on those moving forward. And now, for some really good news. Dino.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's really a lot of good news because the team is a great team. One of the things that we did was we needed to identify certain improvements that needed to be made. And the first step was to value our customers, of which we did. We value all of our customers equally in our process. And by doing that, one of the most important things was is we sort of created a process of identifying, categorizing, and distributing. That helps us be able to look at each permit individually in each submittal. And that allows us to value our customers equally by understanding what each project would require for time. And, you know, we emphasized a complete review, okay? And what incorporates a complete review isn't just thoroughness. It's not just consistency, but it's also timeliness. If you don't consider timeliness, you don't have a complete review, and the cycle time will fail. And, you know, strategically, we assign work very carefully to staff. We understand each staff member's, each plan check engineer's, unique talents. Same thing happens in our inspection union. Doug does a good job of identifying each inspector's talents, and he assigns them the work to get the most efficiency out of them. So, when you combine all this, it increases the percentage, it increases the rate in which we succeed. And we are succeeding because when we, when, if we look back at the data in 2018, 19, we were about 42% late on all permits, and as late as four weeks past due. That's very challenging for customers, very challenging for the organizations to have to answer for, okay? What we did here, since May, we've been working very hard. We improved through, towards the end of '20, right around October, we saw great improvement. We were about 4 to 30% in about one week past due. And right now, since right around December, we are about 0% to right around 10%, but actually, we're running at about 5% late and about one to two business days late. So, that is a great achievement. We worked very hard to get there, but it's not done. We're not through doing that, and we're going to continue to work to improve and even really maybe try to get ahead. So, that's where we're at. And, you know, we've set some unique goals, and I think Donna can dive into some of the goals.
Okay. So, the Tempe Green Code. In conjunction with the new incentives for the Development Bonus Program, we've been working on the Tempe Green Code, and you'll be hearing more about that next month, I believe. We want to modernize our technology, so we really want to modernize and provide an easy, user-friendly, online experience for both external and internal customers. And then, we want to try to implement process management. We've had many changes in workflow, and we're going electronic, so the digital area is making things change. So, we want to go through these, and we really feel confident that if we do this and remap our processes, we'll be able to find time management and duty efficiencies. So, we'll be going for that. And then, our last goal is to deliver superior customer service. We want to treat all of our customers the same. We realize we have varied projects, but we feel like we can look at each project individually and provide the best customer service for that individual project that we can provide. And we're not just trying to provide customer service, we are trying to wow our customers. So, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes. What a great presentation, and I can't tell you how many people are going to be happy about your new processes and the efficiency that you've developed, including the Chamber of Commerce and our residents. So, thank you so much for your hard work. You look like you guys have a great team, and welcome to the city, and thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
I just want to also say congratulations to a job well done in the building safety department, because you guys do great work as a team, and we really do appreciate that. And if anyone can look around what's happening in Tempe, a lot of it has to do with the great work that you all are doing to make sure that we have those projects online and safe. And I can honestly think I can speak for the entire council when I say, thank you for dedicating your time to this, because this is something that you're decreasing the review time, which is, in the development world, time is money, but we also want to be efficient, and we really appreciate the work that you guys do. Thank you very much, Chad. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd welcome up Arndt Week from ASU School Sustainability and Samantha Zah. They're going to be providing you a presentation, Globally and Locally Sustainable Food, Water, Energy Innovation in Urban Living Labs, which thankfully has an abbreviation of GLOCAL, so you don't have to say all that, and Indigenous Food Project Overview. So, please, thank you.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name's Samantha Zah. I'm the Local Climate Action and Local Enterprise Coordinator in the Office of Sustainability. So, today, we have a presentation about our local grant. Just to give you a little bit of information about the different partnerships that we're building with ASU, Arndt Week is here to give you some background on the grant.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Healthy food, as you're all very much aware of, is a major concern of the public, and Tempe is very committed to strong local food economy. In a lot of cases, when projects are being brought to the city, the city has asked for funds. In this particular case, we are actually from ASU bringing the funds. So, this is an international project, and we're trying to learn from and with other cities how we can best build a strong local food economy. We have framed it for the city part, in this particular case, as an accelerator project. So, this is really to build and support small, medium-sized local food businesses. And we are particularly interested in all sectors. This is not just, you know, urban agriculture. This is really trying to go from food production into processing, the manufacturing side, the food outlets, as well as food recycling. Research has shown that this is best be done in a network fashion, right? Really structuring and supporting it. And so, this is why we have crafted a partnership. It's not just the city of Tempe, it's the city of Phoenix, it's Local First Arizona that partners with ASU in this particular project. And we are also interested in supporting new business forms, benefit corporations. We have since 2016 in the state of Arizona, benefit corporation law, where profit orientation is nicely combined with environmental goals and social goals. We have also new legislation since 2016 on cooperative business forums, which are very interesting. There are other elements like land trusts that are emerging. So, we're trying to kind of innovate at the same time as we're learning from other cities from around the world. I want to quickly run you through a couple of different pilot projects that are underway right now. I was yesterday at Hus Brewing Company with my team, and we're working with them on a particular project that is obviously a great pleasure, but it's primarily focusing on B Corp Certification, our green business certification program in collaboration with Local First Arizona. You're all aware of this. And we are trying to move, you know, as one of the, you know, we have 40 employees at Hus Brewing. This is, you know, small but strong business, is obviously very popular, so popular that they are opening another restaurant in downtown Phoenix. So, they are really committed to the region, to Arizona, to Tempe, and they want to, you know, really incorporate strong environmental and social benefits into this, and we're supporting them in this. And we're working with the city of Phoenix in partnership, Strong City of Phoenix, City of Tempe partnership, on regulations and policies that help small businesses, identifying what are some of the gaps, what could be done in this direction. In collaboration with Local First Arizona, we are exploring an urban farmland trust. We have already identified a lot of different interesting lots that could be, you know, maybe pooled in this direction. And a very exciting project is the Indigenous Food Business Project that Samantha Zah from the Office of Sustainability will be presenting to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Arndt. So, my role in the GLOCAL project is to work on two different projects. First is the Indigenous Food Economy Pilot Project. So, indigenous foods are desert-adapted, and they survive better in the increasing heat that we have coming with climate change. And so, they really will be instrumental in helping the city of Tempe build a more resilient agricultural economy and also an equitable one, because indigenous foods offer native farmers and entrepreneurs economic opportunities as well as preserve cultural heritage. So, we have partnered with Local First on this project with their annual Food and Farm Forum, which is the annual event that focuses on technological assistance and planning for the future with Arizona producers and food entrepreneurs. But this year, we are hosting and organizing one of the three tracks to be Indigenous Food Ways tracks. We have native farmers, chefs and cooks, and nonprofit representatives and entrepreneurs represented on the proposed agenda right now, going over a variety of topics like regenerative growing practices, cultural lens of indigenous foods. And right now, we're currently recruiting speakers and reaching out to different organizations to fundraise for that event. The second pilot project that I'm working on is doing food business outreach. So, because we don't necessarily have a pulse on what food businesses are struggling with right now in terms of regulations and their sustainability practice implementation, this outreach is kind of designed to see what is the interest level in sustainable practices in food businesses in Tempe? What are the challenges to implementing sustainability? And where can the Office of Sustainability support food businesses in moving forward on that? So, so far, through different networks, I've connected with 20 different businesses and interviewed five. And doing this food business outreach is also a way for me to raise awareness about Local First's green business certification and the Tempe Chamber of Commerce's Sustainability Pledge. So, one of the solutions that we propose for the food businesses in Tempe is to switch over to compostable restaurantware to reduce the amount of plastic and styrofoam in our waste streams. So, we partnered with DTA for them to take the lead on this project and presented to their board last month. And we sent out the survey to 10 different businesses, got back about four surveys. We're currently in the process of doing price comparisons between this plastic and styrofoam products versus the compostable products, which are made of mostly a sugar byproduct called bagasse. And so, we're waiting for calculations back from the manufacturer to see what the price differentiation is and if it's a possibility. And then, our next step in that project is to figure out distribution and cooperative purchasing through a cooperative purchasing model, where DTA would take the lead again on that, or we would work with the current distributors to figure out if they can take on these new products and offer them to our downtown Tempe businesses.
Vice Mayor Cubey has a question.
Samantha, can I ask you about that? Because Councilmember Adams and I have great interest in seeing compostable ware being applied to our events, especially along Tempe Town Lake. There's massive numbers of people using disposable products now. So, I'm hoping there could be a connection made with our special event staff in that, considering that distribution pilot or a future extension of that, or just considering that special events are a unique category that we'd like to see coordinated?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That is a great idea. One idea we had for piloting is either having an ongoing pilot with a handful of businesses that are willing to make the switch or have a special event, like around Earth Day, where restaurants would just have the compostable ware for that day. Otherwise, there could be other events that we could kind of fine-tune that for, and once we get a relationship established with the manufacturer and the distributors, it would be a lot easier. Yeah. So, thank you. Thank you. So, our next steps for the projects, so as we're doing the food business outreach, we're essentially preparing the businesses for green business certifications, asking them questions about their sustainability practices, and raising awareness about the certifications that are available to them. So, we're hoping that that will build a pipeline to further interest in certification in the future. And I'm working really closely with Helene to partner up on meetings when there is interest in green business certification, so that we have our joint meetings and don't, yeah, joint meetings. So, then, we also have the Food and Farm Forum. That's April 28th and April 29th coming up, and so, we'll have the Indigenous Food Ways Track on both of those days. And our compostable restaurantware pilot, like I said, we're moving forward with next steps on the cost comparisons and working with DTA, and then collecting best practices along the way as we're building out these pilot projects. In terms of broadening the impacts, what we're looking at is developing food economy trainings for city staff to understand what the food economy impact is on the city and on our region, and why we should be interested in sustainability and what we can do about it. And then, like I mentioned, specific programming for food businesses based on the feedback that I get around their issues and their interests in conducting like water audits or waste audits or different things that, different programs that we could help coordinate and offer through the office. That's it. Questions?
No, thank you, Samantha, and thank you, Arndt. I just, your work that you're doing is really important because you're bringing a whole bunch of stakeholders together to really have a, make a bigger difference. So, I thank you guys for that, and I know this council does too. Vice Mayor Cubey has a comment?
Thank you, Samantha. You're such a resource to the city, and I know you came from sustainability at ASU and providing so much of a pipeline of ideas and connections. Thank you so much. And Professor Week, your service on the Sustainability Commission has not gone unnoticed, and the fact that we have this delightful partnership and pipeline is only going to lead to greater sustainable food movement in economies in our city. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you. That's all. All right. Moving forward, the next item on our agenda is our Consent Agenda. All the items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public-carrying items for separate consideration. Public-carrying items are designated by an asterisk, and councilmembers may remove any items for a separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on a public-carrying item, could you please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found in the back of the chambers, and please hand it to our city clerk, and then, when it is your time for comment, I will call upon you. Miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A9, awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B14, and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C11, with the exception of item 5C1, which has been removed from this agenda at the request of our staff. Is there a motion or any items wish to be pulled? Or first, let me ask you this. Is there any comments from the public on any public-carrying items? It is marked with an asterisk. Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll look to my council colleagues. Yes, Vice Mayor Cubey?
I'd like to remove 5A9.
5A9? Not to remove, you want to remove? 5A1, 5A9. Anyone else from the council? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read, with the exception of 5A1 and 5A9 and 5C1?
So, moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion does pass. All right. Item 5A1, Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to quickly just give a note and thank, really, Darlene and Kim on great efforts on helping us drive to the Desert Conservation Commission that we have now and we voted on, we will be voting on. I just want to say thank you for your stewardship on this, and thank you for being part of this initiative, because it's a great opportunity for us to preserve our desert, keep it enjoyable, keep it pristine, and just make sure that, you know, a lot of generations will get a chance to really appreciate that. So, I think this is instrumental work, and I really do appreciate you guys, and thank you so much.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo some of Councilmember Navarro's comments. You know, Desert Conservation Commission wouldn't have happened without, for Darlene Justice and Kim Gaffney Loza, and that's an area that they've been working to improve for years and years, instrumental in making it a preserve in the first place. So, thank you very much for your service to Tempe. Public Park is, and Tempe is very lucky to have you both. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion on item 5A1? Councilmember Navarro?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries six to zero. Next, item 5A9, Vice Mayor Cubey.
So, 5A9, it does involve potential and, you know, serious costs of three-quarters of a million dollars to the city. And I thought in the interest of transparency, I'd like to hear from Alex Smith and from City Manager Ching about this issue. I know it's been litigated, and there's been a mediator involved, and it's been over a five-year time period, but I think it's important that the public understand what we're voting on tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cubey, we have Alex Smith here, as you mentioned, but I'll just start the answer this way by saying, at the conclusion of a significant conversation between ourselves, representatives from SRP who are present, and the developer in this area, we have got to a point where we have an agreement that we feel, while it's certainly not perfect, certainly anything as a result of a negotiated compromise is never going to satisfy everything that we might have asked for, but we feel that it allows the development to continue, it allows the pathway to be built. I know that some of your concerns are about the costs. I would note before I turn it over to Mr. Smith, that the cost estimate in your request for council action cover sheet of $700,000 was an estimate, a high estimate on purpose, because we didn't want to say that the costs that are going to be incurred by the city would be less than that or some other number that we would have provided that would have then been misleading. So, we deliberately said on the higher end what it might be, but we know that these costs are going to be shared in part by the developer, in part by SRP, and in part by us, and that there are other parties as well who may contribute some of the cost of items. So, I'll let Alex speak a little bit more to that, but again, you know, there will be cost sharing that will keep us, we think and anticipate, below that number that's in the RFCA.
And to further the manager's comments, Mayor, and members of council, we will work diligently with SRP and the developer to minimize the costs. There are a variety of technical solutions, engineering solutions, to the problems that we faced, and each one will have an individual contract or a reimbursement agreement, and we will come back to the council for individual budget authority for either a group of those or those individually. So, we'll go through the normal budgeting process. As the manager mentioned, this was a conservative estimate just for transparency sake, and when individual contracts come through, we'll come back to the council.
So, when you talk about the developer, you're referring to the Farmer Property Owners Association and Farmer Arts Retail, and how does the culinary dropout figure into this negotiation?
The Farmer Arts Retail entity would be the culinary dropout, and we have an existing contract with them that we'll go back and look at and pursue whatever fair contributions they should make.
Because it's my understanding that they had committed a contract to building some kind of pathway which no longer makes sense, given the configuration and the problems with the easements and such, and so, there may be, there should be a way that that public benefit gets translated into assisting with the costs of the retention wall that's been described as being needed.
That is correct, Vice Mayor.
So, I'm hoping we'll see movement on that to lessen the city's burden and make sure that culinary dropout doesn't escape unharmed.
We are working on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not entirely sure how long this has been going on, but I do know this was an issue during my first campaign, and the election being, what, 10 days away, less. You know, it's an issue this campaign, and I'm just so thankful that SRP and Farmer Arts Retail have come together as good community partners and figured out a solution. As the city manager said, whenever you have a compromise, no one's happy with everything, but I'm glad that this is moving forward, and we finally have settled this issue, so I'll be supporting it tonight, and I'd like to thank those involved in making it come to reality.
Councilmember Navarro, and then Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to echo the same sentiments that Councilmember Keating just said. You know, obviously, it's an agreement we got to. The most important thing is our connectivity, though, with our pathways throughout our city. It's very strategic that we still have those preserved, and I think, once again, we can start that process. SRP has always been a good help for us and city on a variety of many items, even with the tree canopies helping us plan in other areas, so I will be voting for this.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I, too, am very happy about this result and look forward to moving forward on it. And I know that we're going to have to cut down some trees, but SRP is famous for every tree they cut down, for replacing it with three more. So, I'm very optimistic and happy about this being final. So, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
There's been a motion by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Vice Mayor Kubi has a question?
Sorry, just one. Thank you for bringing that point up, Councilmember Adams. And so, there are 19 trees being removed under the settlement, so we will expect to have the trees replaced, not necessarily in that spot, obviously not in that spot, but three times that amount, that's my understanding. It's not written in the contract, but that's the practice that SRP has adopted. So...
Mayor and Councilwoman Kubi, Vice Mayor Kubi, because of this ongoing issue, SRP rolled out the Right Tree Right program here in Tempe after we rolled it out in Phoenix, and we removed about 171 trees. Every year, we remove hundreds of trees under power lines because of reliability. If that line did go out, it could affect tens of thousands of people in South Tempe and Chandler. It's a critical line. So, under that program, we did plant over 350 trees in Tempe. Because of the location of some of those trees, they have to be removed. They can be relocated outside of our easement, but we are going to have to remove some of those trees. But we've made every effort to keep as many of those trees in place in the easement.
And to replace them as well? By that formulary, that three for every term?
Under our, by federal and state guidelines, we are required to provide reliable and affordable power, and trees are not allowed in our easement.
No, no, I completely understand that. I agree that that, I see that's part of this settlement, but it's my understanding that there'd be replacement of the trees.
Well, we already did provide, as a gesture of goodwill, three, over 350 trees in the city and other locations, at schools, along pathways, along the streets. We worked very closely with Braden Kaye and other people on staff to make that happen.
Right, and that was part of a donation given to the city, but not necessarily connected to this city.
But that was part of trying to do a gesture of goodwill as part of this, because it was so difficult to get to this position. So, some of those trees, we will have to remove them for reliability's sake.
I understand that. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second, without further questions. Are those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? That motion carries six to zero. All right, moving on. Next item on our agenda is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda are considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon The miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions, item 6A1 is to hold a public hearing for an appeal of the Development Review Commission's decision to approve a use permit to allow a fuel center and development plan review for Circle K located at 1900 North Scottsdale Road. The appellant is Kim Gaffney Loza on behalf of the North Tempe Neighborhood Association. I just want to make a, you know, a comment that per the zoning and development code, which we refer to as ZDC, an appeal shall be limited to the issues raised in the petition. The ZDC, Section 6-803, information not included in the petition is not to be considered. Tonight's public hearing is an appeal of the Development Review Commission's decision to approve a use permit to allow a fuel center and a development plan review for Circle K located at 1900 North Scottsdale Road. I know I see Kim and Darlene here. Would you like to make a, you're the appellant, make a presentation or a statement?
Hi, my name is Kim Gaffney Loza. I'm the president of North Tempe Neighborhood Association. Good evening, Mayor and council. We are here to appeal the Development Review Commission, four to three, that approved the proposed large Circle K development at 1900 South Scottsdale Road. This location is between Starbucks and Philly's Restaurant, just south of McCallips on the west side of Scottsdale Road, the former location of Beamer House Carlot. While we do not see the need for any of the goods and services implied by the applicant that our community needs, we only can appeal the fuel use permit. We will present two major objections, safety concerns and the need for additional fueling stations. There have been many reports and articles in the media over the past few years about theft at pumps and skimming. Even though Circle K customers had been a majority of the victims in Maricopa County, I understand that has been significantly reduced due to a new type of reader called EVMs. In another article, I read even these new EVMs can be compromised by a thin wafer that is inserted in the card reader and is called shimming. The author's opinion was having the pumps under surveillance is one of the best methods of preventing any of this activity. Circle K has stated that they have both cameras both inside and out, and there is live feed in the manager's office and at the registers. I was not reassured when I asked that someone was constantly monitoring them or that they had adequate staff to do so. In fact, at the DRC meeting, it was stated that there would be constantly three to four employees on site. I visited two large Circle K's to look at staffing and evidence that security was being monitored. In one, that was very busy, about 8:00 AM, there were two cashiers busy with customers, and one employee who was constantly moving from in and out around the register area assisting customers. That employee did occasionally look up at the monitors. The other Circle K I visited was on a Saturday evening. Three young men were at the registers engaged in conversation at the register. I did not observe anyone in that time that I was there who appeared to be monitoring any surveillance. This proposed fueling station will be the only one on this stretch of Scottsdale Road, north of the 202 in Tempe, not at a light and/or an intersection. When the current quick trip at Hancock and Scottsdale Road was proposed mid-block, a traffic signal was asked for by both the applicant and the neighborhood. At that time, the city did not believe a signal was needed. That changed, and a signal was added after a serious accident at that location. The location of the Circle K that is being proposed is too close to a current intersection with traffic signals to add another signal to ensure safe entry and egress. As was mentioned by the applicant, this would be purely a drive-by business and would not significantly increase business. Nonetheless, it would significantly increase pull-ins and pull-outs due to the nature of the business and the increased number of access drives in a high pedestrian area. Darlene and I met with Transportation to inquire about a possible Mary Ann Corridor grant that our neighborhoods were considering to master plan for Scottsdale Road. We also asked about a traffic study. We were told on the traffic study, this business was not large enough to really ask for one because of the cost that would incur. As a result of that discussion, though, we learned that the city had obtained federal funding for a grant proposal to make improvements along Scottsdale Road, which include bike lanes, lighting, and other considerations. An additional drive, especially so close to the Starbucks drive, is going to increase the probability of bike and auto collisions. Okay, so, this is going to be my first attempt at doing this on the slide presentation. So, let's see. Which one? Okay. There we go. Okay. So, Slide 1. As you can see from the collision report for 2019, north of the 202, from the Tempe Police Department, the intersection of McCallips and Scottsdale Road account for over 30% of the auto collisions in our part of town. This intersection and section of Scottsdale Road has quite a bit of pedestrian traffic. See if I get this one? Nope. Okay. So, the existing drive for this property is the South Drive for the proposed Circle K, which will allow left turns in and out. Well, there is adequate line of sight. Those autos making a left turn in and out will have to watch for pedestrians, future bike traffic, as well as three lanes of traffic. The danger here will be because of the customers that fueling stations often attract or in a hurry to get to or from work and appointments. The current configuration of the long left turn lanes on northbound Scottsdale Road at McCallips allow enough room to make U-turns, so they would be able to enter that right turn-only entrance that the Circle K proposes. While this may not happen often, it is dangerous because of the right turns out of the Starbucks and the volume of right turns from eastbound McCallips and southbound Scottsdale Road. At the DRC, the applicant stated that the current bus stop in front of the Starbucks would be moved in front of the proposed Circle K. The bus stop was mentioned again that it would be constructed in front of the Circle K as part of the development. The development rendering did not show a pullout. When Darlene and I asked Transportation about this, we discovered that no application for moving the current bus stop had been received. Transportation prefers to have connecting bus line stops to be near intersections and crosswalks to avoid jaywalking. I was out taking pictures for just 10 minutes of the area, and in that time, I caught pedestrians crossing mid-block. When Darlene and I met with representatives from Circle K at Starbucks, well, this was not this past Monday, but it was about a month ago, a woman was crossing Scottsdale Road right in front of us, about 250 feet from the intersection. Putting a bus stop far from the intersection would most likely increase that behavior. Now, I'm going to put Julian on the front of this, unfortunately. Having attended a Vision Zero public meeting, Julian Dressing made a statement stating a reason for changing traffic planning. It really stuck with me. To the best of my memory, that statement was that no one deserves to die or be maimed from making a mistake. The opportunities for poor decisions and mistakes would be great with this development. Thank you. This map shows that there are eight gas stations within one and a half miles of the proposed Circle K. I'm talking about the four along Scottsdale Road, and one to the west on McDowell, and the one on Miller, which, Miller, and again, on Hayden Road. There are eight different service stations within that area. This, the second slide shows the coverage of Circle K gas stations in North Tempe and South Scottsdale. This slide gives a larger snapshot. It also calls attention to a void in central Scottsdale. This chart shows the addresses of all types of gas stations along Scottsdale Road. In North Tempe, we have, and you will see in red, in North Tempe, we have four gas stations on Scottsdale Road within one and a half miles. That is from Continental to the 202. In Scottsdale, the lower red box, in Scottsdale, along Scottsdale Road, there are only three gas stations, from Thomas Road to one block before Shea Boulevard, a distance of 10.03 miles. There is only one southbound gas station at Shea until Continental in Tempe. Our Tempe community is well-covered. Scottsdale may be underserved. Tempe is not. The development attorney for Circle K said our community needs this fueling station This is a police chart with calls for service for our local Tempe gas stations. Circle K on Continental has six fueling stations. That's where people can pull up and put gas in their vehicle. QT has 20. Circle K has 30% of the number of fueling stations that QT has. Circle K has 41% of the calls per service that QT has, and yet, it has 92% of the crime statistics that QT has seen. Most of the calls for service are for people bothering and harassing others and that type of thing, many times homeless situations. Circle K has traditionally been understaffed, which does not help. It is always very messy with overfilled trashcans, unkempt counter spaces, and so forth compared to QT. The environment is not the best. In summary, the DRC voted four to three to approve the fueling station permit. Several things were considered in that determination, some of them were misrepresented. The first thing that the development attorney pointed out to the DRC while beginning his presentation was, this area does not have a character area. I ask you, does that mean anything goes? Are we being penalized for this? Rumors have indicated that Tempe is not anxious to pursue a character area in our community. We have heard recently that the urban core is holding up this process. That's very frustrating. The character area planning process is to bring neighbors together and to foster community consensus for the good of the, of all neighborhoods. The DRC was then told that Circle K was moving the bus stop to a better location in front of their business. Some on DRC liked that investment. Tempe Transportation Staff has told us that has never been discussed and would not be approved. The DRC was told that this business would fill a need in our community. As shown tonight, the need is in Scottsdale, not our community. We have 50 fueling stations. We need restaurants, gathering places, and we need a character area plan. There was no required traffic study at that time. If there is one now, did the city obtain it, or who did? The development attorney ignored our long-term concerns and issues that we raised about the condition of our already-existing Circle K on Continental. When asked by a DRC commissioner, aren't there standards that all Circle K's must meet? The DRC was told that that is not a corporate store, and that they were planning at some time to, not to renew the lease. During a later meeting with the attorney and the Circle K development director, she told us that all Circle K's are corporate stores. The day we met, before the meeting, the Circle K was, that particular Circle K was a big mess. All six trashcans outside were badly overflowing, trashcans inside weren't any better, countertops, coffee service, food, and condiments were unattended and had not been cleaned at all. Only one person was working. Is it any wonder that more times than not, you do not get a receipt when you purchase gas at those pumps? The director said she would look into this. Finally, as Kim has pointed out so very thoroughly and comprehensively, we do have very serious concerns for safety with this proposed location. That is the most important point tonight. Tempe has experienced safety issues on Scottsdale Road before when QT was built, as she mentioned. It took several accidents and another serious accident when people were making left turns to finally get a traffic light. This is not an option to add a traffic light for this Circle K, since the location is unsafely too close to the intersection. This location will prompt even more left turns and U-turns across Scottsdale Road. The traffic has significantly increased over the The traffic has significantly increased over the years. We do not need a traffic study to prove that. We live it every day. The accident records Tempe Police supplied indicate that this intersection is already the one with the most accidents in Tempe. We do not want this unsafe, off-corner, unneeded development to add to that statistic. We sincerely request that you vote to uphold our appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darlene.
Do you have any questions?
Not this moment.
Thank you. We would like to reserve the right to come back.
You will.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm going to call you back up.
Thank you.
But first, we need to have, we need to hear from the applicant. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, David Sheshevsky, on behalf of Circle K. For your record, my address is 11811 North Tatum, Suite 1051, Phoenix. There we go. Well, we have a bit of an extended presentation. I will try to bounce through these slides quickly and get to the heart of the matter in terms of the appeal relative to the use permit and then address some of the specific questions that the appellant addressed. Here, there we go. I'll just get through these first ones. I beg your indulgence. Very quickly, just so we, again, we all understand the site plan. I know you have it in your packets, but I do want to explain, again, all the existing improvements would be demolished as required with the site plan tied to the use permit. We would construct an approximately 5,200-square-foot store along the west boundary line of the site, gas pumps out closer to Scottsdale Road utilizing the existing southern access that exists today, and then installing a new northern access point. I wanted to show this plan because one of the issues I know that was brought up was potential U-turns at that median and people trying to use that northern access point. As we worked through with city staff on this matter, you'll notice there's a diverter island in that driveway. That was a request from the city relative to preventing full access, other turning movements, other than right in, right out at that drive, and so that's been incorporated in the plan. Very quickly, you'll note here, sort of the middle part of the frontage, there is a call-out for the new bus bay. As I recall working through this with staff, that was a request from the city to relocate the bus bay. I mean, from our perspective, if the city doesn't want it relocated, we're certainly fine to leave it as it sits today, but as the request came, we did agree to relocate it. Typically, in a traffic scenario, having those a bit further from a high-traffic intersection helps alleviate some of the congestion because there is no bus pullout here, so the bus would literally stop in the through lane, and so getting that off the intersection a bit tends to help alleviate some of the traffic concerns. Again, just very quickly, in terms of illustrations, and I'll get to the use permit criteria here very quickly. As you're all aware, there are five criteria that the city establishes for a use permit, the first of which will not be a significant increase in vehicular or pedestrian traffic in adjoining areas. Again, as been mentioned, we did not do a traffic study here. It was not requested of us from the city. We did work with city staff and street staff relative to drive locations and turning movements and so forth, and again, it was simply not required. Second criteria in terms of nuisance and emission of odors, dust, noise, and gas. Again, the proposed development here, from our perspective, and I certainly believe from staff's perspective and reviewing the staff report, will be a significant improvement to the property. As you all know, that property's been utilized as a car lot for many, many years. Staff notes in their report that there's been a history of code violations on that property, and if you look at it today, really virtually no landscaping on the site whatsoever. One of the criteria in terms of improving the overall aesthetic of this and lessening things such as heat island effects and other will be the significant landscape that'll be added to the site with this development. In terms of, there will be no contribution in terms of deterioration in the neighborhood. Again, we believe the significant improvements that will be provided here in terms of landscaping, security lighting, security cameras, retail presence on the site on a 24/7 basis, as your police department knows from working through SEPTED, is a significant crime deterrent to the community. Again, we'll be adding a new buffer along the western boundary line where none exists today, buffer to the multifamily to the west, and again, 24-hour occupied facility that is well-lighted. And I would point out, because I know there was a comment about monitoring and observing activities, these new facilities will typically have, depending on the design of the site, somewhere between 12 and 16 security cameras. Those are both internal and external. They're generally on the corners of the building and facing, in this case, to the north and south, as well as on the pumps. And so while no one is sitting in front of a monitor, monitoring it on a 24/7, every-minute basis, that is on a constant digital backup, it can be monitored from the store as well as monitored from Circle K's corporate security center, which is right here in Tempe, if there's an incident, and anything from a simple trespass to, you know, two customers having an argument on the lot to more severe issues. And so there is a constant surveillance that goes on on this property. Again, in terms of compatibility with surrounding structures, as you may have seen on one of the earlier slides, all this property, both to the north, to the west, to the south, and across the street, is all zoned CSS, commercial shopping center. And so what is proposed here, again, very well fits in that zoning category and is certainly compatible with the other retail uses up and down Scottsdale Road. We talked about development plan review, and I'll leave it, but just to, again, hit maybe a bit on the specific issues that were brought up on the appeal in terms of traffic safety concerns. We all know Scottsdale Road is a very busy street. We did do some significant work with city staff in locating the drives and designing the drives with a diverter island, so ingress and egress can be easily and adequately accommodated. I show on the bottom of the screen here, this is an excerpt from your staff report that you have in front of you, that traffic engineering did not require a traffic study as it anticipated that the existing traffic levels would be accommodated in this area. And again, noting that this site is not a destination use, but rather a drive-by use. Although we were not required to do a traffic study, as these issues came up from the community and working with city, we did reach out to our traffic engineer and had him prepare a short report, which was provided to staff prior to your last council hearing. And again, on your screen is just an excerpt from that report noting that Scottsdale Road has been widened to its ultimate condition, and the anticipated additional trips that would be provided by the new development should be adequately handled and not have a significant impact on the traffic conditions at the site. Again, we talked about nuisance concerns. Again, we bring this forward to you in the staff report and at DRC and even now, there has been no opposition from your police department. Circle K operates a number of stores in Tempe. We have always worked with the department very well, and we are conditioned to work with the department for a final SEPTED report as this store is designed, which would give the city a very detailed ability to look at crime security and security prevention measures for the facility. In terms of additional fuel facilities, as you know, there are other fuel facilities on Scottsdale Road, and I know the appellant showed an aerial shot with all the other stores to the east, but as has been repeated and repeated, these type of uses are nondestination uses. They are drive-by uses. So having a store over on Hayden or on Pima or further to the north, people aren't going to go out of their way, drive by to go to a Circle K store or any other convenience store for that matter. And so having this store here, from our perspective, looking at the traffic studies, looking at growth patterns, looking at current density in this area. And again, just to put some numbers out there, I mean, within a mile of this site, there's more than 7,000 households. You have almost 15,000 employees in this area, plus extensive amounts of commuter traffic on Scottsdale Road. So there is a need. The other thing I would point out is, in looking at this facility, unlike some of the other facilities that have very large gas and fuel offers, you'll notice this facility really focuses on the store. Again, the building's about 5,200 square feet. The focus is on the products inside the store, larger food offerings, larger customer service offerings in there. And yes, we do offer fuel because it's what convenience stores do, but as a smaller fueling facility than you see at most of the other stores in this area. Again, we bring this forward to you. As noted in the staff report, we meet the goals and objectives that were set out for redevelopment in this area of the city. We aren't allowed use in the CSS zoning district. We believe, as staff has noted in the report, as I've tried to walk you through, and as was noted by your Development Review Commission, we have satisfied the criteria for the issuance of the use permit. Again, all the development standards, and I realize the Development Review's not here, but we are asking, we are bringing this forward without a request for variance. Again, as you will see, and I believe you probably have in your packet, there was previously community support for this from folks that lived in the community right behind the store. Recently, a petition was submitted with, I believe, about 64 signatures in support on this. And again, we do bring this forward to you with a staff recommendation for approval and a recommendation for approval by your Development Review Commission. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? Could you please get my attention? Yes? Please state your name and place of residence for the record. They switched sides on you, just so you know.
Hi, my name is Lane Caraway. I reside at 1422 North Sunset Drive, which is the Cavalier Hills neighborhood. My neighborhood is directly behind this development project. I am also the person who procrastinated to the last weekend to get signatures, and Mother Nature did not cooperate. My neighborhood has been discussing this project since right after Thanksgiving. I received one call even while I was in Las Vegas right after Thanksgiving about this project. I would say since that time, we have gone from borderline to being educated more. David's, we've had long discussions, the Development Attorney. Our neighborhood is overwhelmingly supporting this. As far as the issues that were brought forward, I believe, I don't know if you got Paul's, whoops, Paul's little response, council communicator, but he addressed every one of your, what you're going by, legal concerns. As far as traffic goes on Scottsdale, I have asked, South Scottsdale citizens have asked, "We need to review that intersection. The left-protected turn signal does not work." So you want to talk about accidents? I sit at Starbucks almost every day on that corner. These people don't even live in the neighborhood where this is going. They live north. So I see on a daily basis what goes on in this community, especially at that intersection. It is really because people get impatient. When you're backed up for four lights to make a turn onto Scottsdale Road, that's unacceptable. Then people take the chances. Boom, you have an accident. I would say every day, we see somebody have an accident between McKellips-Scottsdale all the way down to Curry. As far as this being the most traffic accident intersection for Tempe, I believe she misstated. I don't believe Scottsdale-Mckellip is by far anywhere close to being the biggest accident-prone. As far as gasoline stations, I can assure you, this thing will be used, and several of you up on this dais preach to me all the time about spending money in Tempe. I get my gas in South Scottsdale or to QT. So this would be great to have this addition, and if it makes them, QT start cleaning up their act, because QT has really been going down. And I also discussed with David, the Development Attorney, about the other issues that we have in our community, and he's addressed those with us. So I am hoping that you will approve this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Thank you. Wait a second. Councilmember Adams has a question from staff.
Yes.
If you have staff, Councilmember Adams?
Yes. Shelley, come up from Transportation and just clarify the bus stop. Ms. Seiler. And then if you could address the accidents at the intersection too, or if that has to be PD, I don't know, but whatever. I know you're a wealth of knowledge, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Council Shelley Seiler, Deputy Engineering and Transportation Director. I have confirmed with our transit staff that there was not a request to move the bus stop. We've confirmed that it will be staying where it is. We do prefer that the bus stops be located closer to the intersection so that those people who are making transfers don't have to walk long distances. Your other question regarding the intersection of Scottsdale and McKellips, it is not on our high-accident location or list. There are other locations and intersections in the city that do have a higher number of collisions. Certainly, as we proceed with the pedestrian and streetscape project that Darlene and Kim mentioned, we will review this intersection as well as any turning movements that might be happening that are in conflict to see if there are improvements that we can make to make the corridor safer. That's what those projects are really about, is to improve the safety along the corridor. So we will be doing that. And then we will also, as part of that project, be installing an additional signal, likely a hawk in the neighborhood of or around Cavalier, and that will assist with some of the pedestrian crossing that is occurring mid-block. So we know that that is needed in the area.
And do you see this being a potential increase in traffic on Scottsdale Road?
Well, whenever you switch from a use like a auto sales to a service state with, you know, gas station, yes, there will be an increase in traffic. We have reviewed that. The attorney was correct in that service stations and gas stations do generate most of their traffic from traffic that's already on the roadway, but there will be new trips associated with this. We do not feel that it will impact the functioning of Scottsdale Road, nor do we feel that there would be a result in increased crashes or safety. But again, as this, if the council were to approve this and as we move forward, as we do with, you know, any corridor in the city, we would look for concerns and address those as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm glad you mentioned about, you know, on our way, doing a pedestrian improvement of that area with landscape. Does that also mean that we might even increase the size of our existing islands, right-of-way islands in that area? Because I'm curious, when we talk about this location, is it a right-in, right-out location to where they're not going to make left-hand turns?
The, all right, let me get my, the northern driveway would be right-in, right-out. The southern driveway would still allow less in and less out. That is, with the project that we were speaking about, we would work with the adjacent residences and businesses, as we always do, to look for improvement should crashes increase in the area. So there is the potential to increase the length of the islands if we are seeing that we, you know, do have an increase in the collisions for those making a left out of the driveway.
Right. And that's kind of what I was noticing is, when you make a left out, you don't have, and technically, legally, you're supposed to go left into the lane, not into the median, then in the lane. I know we do, everyone does that, but I don't know if that's legal or not.
I believe PD has previously addressed that it is legal to turn left into the two-way left turn and then make your movement into the through lane.
But you just can't drive down it, technically.
Correct.
Which, this won't allow that to happen, for sure. Okay, and that answers that question. And then you answered the previous questions with Councilmember Adams. That's it for now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Seiler. All right. If the appellant, oh, Councilman Navarro.
Sorry about that. Shelley, come back. Why not the bus stop moved at that location if it was carved in to where it doesn't pop out? Because I have to say, I kind of, I agree with Lane's perception with that bus, because I've driven it many times. When a bus gets loaded up there, people want to chance it and screw around it because it just, it's really quick, right? I mean, it's such a tight corner. Why not push it down? It doesn't seem that far.
So for bus operations, bus pullouts actually do impact our ability to maintain service. So if a bus pulls into the bus pullout and it can't get back into the flow of traffic, so if you talk to people who are in the drivers and who are in the transit industry, while we recognize that from a congestion and traffic standpoint, it is beneficial, but sometimes there are those drawbacks. If you are, if we were to install a bus pullout, we would really recommend that it be closer to the far side of the intersection because when the signal changes, it allows the bus to pull back into the flow of traffic. The further you get away from the intersection, the harder that gets.
I feel you. Thanks.
Thank you.
If you are, if we were to install a bus pullout, we would really recommend that it be closer to the far side of the intersection, because when the signal changes, it allows the bus to pull back into the flow of traffic. The further you get away from the intersection, the harder that gets.
I feel you. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. This time, can we have the appellant, would you like to come up and have some remarks from some of the conversations that have been had? Darlene and Kim?
One thing I would have to say, as far as the collision accident reports, that came right from Tempe PD. So, and I think you could see from the slide, if we need to pull it up, we can, that if you're looking at the number of accidents that happened in 2019, it is very obvious that it's more than thirty percent that we're at that intersection. I don't have the exact type of accidents that happened. And as far as us being north of that neighborhood, that street is used by us all the time. We use that Starbucks. We were sitting, actually having a meeting at that Starbucks outside at one of the tables when an accident happened, and it came within, what, about fifteen feet of us as we were sitting there. So, I think that this is still a part of our neighborhood. Actually, Darlene's neighborhood is adjacent to it across McKellups. So, I still consider it part of our neighborhood. Darlene, if you want to say anything else?
Sure wish we'd had a character area. I bet a lot of these things, I'm not saying in particular Circle K, but I think we need to get folks together and come to what we really need. Scottsdale Road is changing. I'm really glad they're putting bike paths in, because that's been a big issue. Right now, they go down College, which we love, and that's a real safe place, and that's good to keep them there. But if they put them in on Scottsdale Road, one of the things, Joel, they said they're going to have to narrow the medians so that they can accomplish this. So, it's good you didn't get the curbing redone, because that's something big is going to happen there with that. But doing that work and then putting bike paths, and then if you have a bus pullout, it's interesting that today he shows a bus pullout, but at the last meeting, he didn't have that when he presented it to DRC. It was just a bus stop. This is our neighborhood. I've lived in this neighborhood fifty-some years. I drive up and down this street all the time, every day, multiple times. I hate to see neighbors coming head-to-head on this issue, and I don't want that to happen. We are, we do have real safety concerns. We had that, we wanted a quick trip to go in. And people coming out of Hancock asked to have a light at that. We asked to have a light, and Quick Trip did. It wasn't until there were really bad accident, there'd been multiple accidents. The whole thing with this, if it's going in, I think you need to not let them make left turns in there. And I could see Circle K applicant is wincing over that. But this is, it also was said, this is not the most dangerous corner. No, in North Tempe it is, but not in all of Tempe. It is in North Tempe along Scottsdale Road. So, I'm sorry that, I wish I had a magic wand to make this right, but we ask that you deny it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make one further statement. When Darlene mentioned all the fueling stations that we have along Scottsdale Road, they're never full. So, you know, it would be spreading out those sales probably a little bit more, but we really, even with the growth that has happened, there's been plenty of room. I've never had to wait, you know, to pull up to a pump. So, thanks again.
Thank you. All right. If we could have the applicant come back up, or if you would like to make any closing statements?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I just, to kind of drive home, the overriding concern is clearly for most of the comments, has been traffic. Lots of concerns about, you know, whether it's U-turns, no-U-turns, the bus, the bus bay, and traffic collision, so on and so forth. Again, I, you know, what I, what we presented earlier was, again, while the city didn't ask us to do a traffic study, we did reach out to our traffic engineer. They took a look at it, and in their professional opinion, again, wrote a report that said existing conditions on Scottsdale Road are adequate to handle the turning movements. You just heard someone from your own Streets Department essentially make the same comment, that while, yes, there will be additional turning movements, just by the very nature of the business, that conditions on Scottsdale Road are adequate and it should not cause any additional impact in that area. So, again, that, that being, you know, the significant concern and obviously part of your use permit test, I think that's been satisfied by both independent analysis from our traffic engineer and from your city staff. You know, again, in terms of development, we think this is a quality development that'll go in here. It really improves the streetscape, the landscaping, Heat Island effects, other things that, you know, that property has, needs some help. And, you know, our investment here in terms of, is this viable location for another gas station? Is it really needed? Again, Circle K, Tempe-based company, has been in business a long, long time. They know their business well. They would not investing millions and millions of dollars in this project if they believed it was not going to be successful. And again, based on demographics that are there today, the traffic volumes that are there today, and as Scottsdale Road is changing, as we've all heard, we do think this will provide a needed service for the community. I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, David. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, is any other comments from the council on this?
Mayor.
Yes. Councilman Navarro, then Vice Mayor.
Just to be clear, the, what we need, what we're voting on is a use permit for the gas, for them to have gas stalls. Am I correct?
Yes.
So...
In a convenience store.
In a convenience, oh, for both? Or is it just the gas? Just the gas? Okay. So, no matter what, if they didn't have stalls, it's a, it's a convenience store, and they're still, it's still Circle K, it's still traffic, potentially maybe not as much because it has no gas, but am I correct?
You're correct. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The use permit is to deal with the fuel pumps rather than the store. The store can still go in. The use permit that you all are deciding on is purely for the fuel pumps.
And then, just to be clear, Circle K owns the property, they're not leasing it?
Councilmember Navarro, Circle K is an escrow to acquire it, subject to final permits and so forth. They would close and be, and own it as a corporate store.
Thank you. All right. I want to make something, I'll go to you in a second. I want to make, make a comment. And I really appreciate everyone coming and speaking to this, because this is important. We're talking about individuals' neighborhoods and how certain things do impact individual lives. But as a council, you know, we have to make a decision that is based on state law as well as our, the city zoning code. If we base our decision on elements outside of that criteria in our code, that means that there could potentially be a lawsuit that could be filed against us. And, you know, we have to look at the use. In this case, it's a new convenience store, but the use with a fueling station, as was mentioned. I think it's fair to say that we all acknowledge that the use currently exists in this area. Everyone has mentioned that, even the appellant, as well as the applicant. It already exists there, so it'd be really hard to make it, determine that this type of use would not, that would be detrimental, because it already exists there. The one thing I do want to be clear on is that, you know, we cannot base our decision based on market conditions, or whether or not a property owner would be able to build a successful business, because there's already competition in the area. And after reading the appeal, I really feel for, you know, Darlene and Kim and individuals that have concerns about this, but the appeal, the main concern, they list as safety in, as a, as a main concern. And unfortunately, because this is a use permit, we have certain criteria that we have to base our decision on, that safety is, unfortunately, it's not on the list for us to consider. It doesn't mean it's not important, but we're following state law and our zoning code laws. And, you know, we can help design a safer convenience store with fueling stations, which I think we're trying to do, and our staff, I pretty feel that they've done that. I think it's important that we want everyone to be safe. But I just wanted everyone to know that there's certain, on appeals such as this with use permits, there's certain laws, state laws we have to follow, and certain criteria that we have to really look at, because it could change the outcome of how we move forward. And it doesn't mean that one decision is better or another decision, it's just something that we really need to consider. We're kind of limited in how we can look at this case. Vice Mayor Kiwi.
Thank you, Doreen and Kim for coming to us. I know, obviously, you put so much time and effort and work into your appeal. And yes, North Tempe does need a character area plan, that's clear. Yes, this intersection needs improvements. And by the way, if you go to our dashboard at tempe.gov, you can see the fatal and serious crash statistics. We were looking at that while the commentary was going on, it was really interesting. And yes, there are many fuel stations in that area, but it's, it's not really our decision to make. Maybe they're going to make a terrible business decision and they'll fail, but we can't really dictate that. We don't have that kind of authority to say, you know, we'd rather there be, you know, a bookstore here or something. It's their, it's their decision. It may be a bad decision. They've done market study and feel like it, it should be going, but to what the, what the mayor said, we have to operate as a quasi-judicial body here, and we have to look at the use criteria, the five use criteria. And reading over this, I don't feel like you've made the case in the appeal for the five use criteria, and we have to decide based on that, not whether we would prefer to have a different kind of business there. You know, if we could choose, if we could dictate, yes, maybe there would be something different, but we have to operate in a quasi-judicial manner, looking at the specific criteria. So, that is the reason I will be voting to deny the appeal, and I appreciate all your hard work, but it's, it's not justified, given the evidence you presented.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I just kind of want to echo some of the comments that have already been made. You know, unfortunately, we do have to take these cases, and there's kind of a strict criteria in which we can deny these types of things. And, I mean, you guys did your homework, right? I was very impressed with, you know, your charts and showing where all the other gas stations were, and, you know, you brought in the, the accidents and things like that, and then calls from the police. I mean, you definitely brought your A-game, and, you know, your passion for, for that area has been apparent since the day I sat down in this chair. So, I thank you for your advocacy for that. But, you know, as, as has been mentioned, our hands are kind of tied on this. If they're asking for a variance or something like that, you know, I mean, just, just your presentation alone would have moved me to your side, but unfortunately, the way I have to vote tonight has to follow state law, and so I will be voting to deny your appeal. But I thank you for your advocacy and your passion.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, and I agree with what Randy and Lauren have said, and you did do a great presentation. And I would like the city to commit to doing a character area in your, in your city, if we, if we can do that.
For the record, we are doing a character area.
Oh, okay. All right, well, then we are. So, anyway, thanks for your passion and your presentation. It was excellent.
All right. So, moving forward, we need to have a motion. If there's a motion to approve the appeal, it denies a use permit and a development plan review. If there's a motion to deny the appeal, then that approves a use permit and development plan review to allow the Circle K and the fuel center to go forward. Those are the two options we have. So, I look for a motion on item... Six A.1. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Kiwi to deny the appeal. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Navarro. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion passes six to zero to deny the appeal. All right. Next item is item six A.2. Is request a development plan review for a new one-story, one-to-three-story mixed-use development consisting of one hundred and eighty dwelling units and commercial use for East Line Village Phase One located at twenty-twenty-five East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Gamage and Burnham. Ms. Vaz.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, my name is Manjula Vaz, with the Lockroom of Gamage and Burnham. I'm going to make a very brief presentation. I'm only here to, I know we've talked a lot about this project, talked a lot about cul-de-sac. I think council wanted to see the design plans for the first phase, so I'm just going to show you some of the design. I know all of you have actually seen it with, I think, through our, with our VR, but just to show you briefly, I'll go through this quickly. Just to briefly, this yellow line outlines the first phase, so you can kind of see the first phase of, of what's happening. Just to go through it, we have first phase, commercial and first phase of residential, which is what we are approving tonight, along with the pedestrian spine that goes all the way through the development. The pedestrian spine is our main paseo, but also acts as our fire lane, as you can see on the state, on the screen. And then, just to give you very briefly, here's kind of the landscape plan. And as you remember, in terms of the project, we're talking about taking away the cars. There is, there are cars, I don't know how to do this here, but there are cars on the far, so there's no more pointing with my pointer anymore, I guess. So, no more pointing. So, on the far left side, that is where we do have certainly some of the parking for the retail, that the retail is being built in the first phase, and then for the guests, and then as you see there, then the rest will be residential. So, this is, just looking southeast, as you can see, we're going to be building kind of pedestrian crossing at Smith Martin, and then southeast from Smith Martin Apache Boulevard. Again, just different perspectives along Apache Boulevard. We're really excited about the project. This is Wilder Muth. If you can imagine Wilder Muth now with the UPS, then what we're building. And I know you've seen this in VR, and it's certainly much more alive through the VR. Just some different show, pictures showing the interior of the courtyards, our marketplace, and then, again, marketplace, and then some of this is the residential pod buildings, where you have kind of neighbors coming together, shading and trees, so.
I like the pit bull there, that's good.
Thank you. That, Mr. Mayor, yes, was for Councilman Keating. That is what it's for. So, I'm happy to, I can, just, I'm happy to talk more about it, or happy to, we're super excited, as you may, if you've been by the site. Buildings have been demolished. We've already started work, started some site work, and so we're really excited to move on, and we've had enormous, enormous response, and we appreciate everybody's help.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Vaz? Okay. Is there a motion to move?
I'll second.
Item six A.2. It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Ms. Vaz. All right. Next item, six A.3, is adopt a resolution to adopt development fees for water facilities, wastewater facilities, and street facilities. Is there any comments or discussion on item six A.3? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Chin. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion does move forward. Item six A.4, is approve a one-year renewal with G4S Secure Solutions Incorporated to provide armed and unarmed security officers and services for various cities' departments. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item six A.4?
Move to approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. Next item is item six A.5, is to award a construction manager at risk for a contract to PCL Construction Incorporated for the asset management, the South Tempe Water Treatment Plant Concrete Repairs, guaranteed maximum price, six projects located at sixty-six-hundred South Price Road. Is there any comments or discussion on item six A.5, or a motion on item six A.5?
Move to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries six to zero. Item six A.6 is to award a job construction contracts for Cactus Asphalt, Sunland Asphalt and Construction Incorporated, and the S. and S. paving and construction incorporated to perform paving and resurfacing condition services in the city of Tempe. Any comments or discussion on item six A.6? Is there a motion on item six A.6? Moved by Councilmember Chin, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries six to zero. The next section is our non-consent agenda. Items will be, items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken, and a second hearing for these votes will be scheduled for March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty, with the exception of item six B.3, which is scheduled for April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. First item in this section is six B.1, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of that portion of South Clark Drive right-of-way lying north to Wilder Muth Avenue and located to the southeast corner, quarter of Section Twenty-four, the Township One, North Range Four, East, Hela and Salt River one, North Range Four, East Hela and Salt River Base in Meridian, in Maricopa County, Arizona. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for March 26. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Any other comments from council? Next is item 6B2, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of an easement to Arizona Public Service Company, APS, to over certain city-owned land at One West Rio Salado Parkway, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for March 26, 2020. Any comments or discussion? This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address us on item 6B2? Could you get my attention? Seeing none. Close that portion. Any comments from council? Last item on this section is 6B3, to introduce and hold the first public hearing to receive public comment on in a resolution authorizing the annual community development block grant, or home program and emergency solutions grants action plan for fiscal year 2021, with approval of the funding facilities, analysis of impediments, impediments to fair housing choice and consolidated plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2025. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for April 23, 2020. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us on the item 6B3? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Any comments from my council colleagues? Alrighty. Next agenda item is scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption. It will be considered now. These items were read and introduced on February 13, 2020, and a vote will be taken tonight. Ordinance and items for second hearing and final adoption. Item 6C1 is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay and development plan review for Stade Bridge Suites located at 93 South Rockford Drive for a new five-story, 109-key-room hotel on 2.8 acres. The applicant is Corals &amp; Brady. The first public hearing was held on February 13, 2020. I see the applicants up here. Mr. Graff, please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Ben Graff with Law Firm of Corals &amp; Brady, representing Thurldsen Hospitality. Tonight is the second hearing, the review for the new Stade Bridge Suites Hotel. To start, I will keep this very brief unless there's other questions. This is the final piece of the overall PAD at 2100 Rio Salado, the culmination of almost 10 years of work to turn a landfill into a mixed-use development. Again, I always like to brag about that. One of the cooler things I've been a part of as a zoning attorney. Given that there hasn't been any opposition, we've got full support from staff, no one participated in the neighborhood meeting, and there haven't been any issues. Tonight, we really wanted to focus just on responding to the vice mayor's comment during the informational session, request for looking responsibly at any potential solar for this site. And I think we've reached a really good compromise in that the developer is willing to add the stipulation shown on your screen. Also have hard copies for the record. And the purpose of this stipulation is to provide this development in a solar-ready capacity, so that it will be easier, if feasible, to place solar panels on the roof. So we will be installing the infrastructure necessary at this time. So I will end there unless there's any questions from the mayor or council.
Great. Councilmember Keating.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Before I say what I'm going to say, that is a sharp tie, Ben.
Thank you.
I tell you what, that's a good knot, too.
Wise men wear pink.
That's right. That's why you texted it to me. I didn't notice until you got up here. Look, thank you so much for doing what you did to address the vice mayor's concerns and promoting solar energy in the city of Tempe. Very happy to support this project, and I would move that we approve item 6C1.
Okay. There's been, well, there's been a motion, and then I'll get a second in a second. Seconded by Councilmember Navarro, but we got comment from the rest of the council, Councilmember Navarro.
No, I just, hey, Ben, this is a great project, great... I love how you placed the pool. I think that's kind of strategic. But the whole complex, this really makes the add-in to the complex with the other hotels all the way around. And it's a really neat corner. I'm glad the elevations are there, too, because I think that adds to the character of the whole area. So, great job on this, and great job on making it solar-ready.
You're welcome. And I have to, with that comment, I do have to give credit where credit's due. The eventual placement of that pool was actually the idea of Diana Kaminsky from your staff. Our first submittal had the project flipped. And staff came back and said, you know, we'd really like to have that pool overlooking that, push the building back. And we ended up not being able to agree anymore. So I did want to give credit where credit's due, since you pointed that out.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Kubi.
So I really appreciate your efforts on behalf of us, at least a solar-ready Tempe. You know, we're in the midst of a climate crisis, and I know you more than anyone, because I know you serve as an elected official and are focused on sustainability. Understand that. It's profoundly disappointing to me that our utilities have not caught up with the fact that we're in a climate emergency, and it's very disappointing that they make solar unaffordable when we know that solar is the cheapest form of power now. So it's so disappointing. So utilities out there, maybe get with the program. And, but I, and, you know, elected officials are part of that. We need to really push, and we need to represent our values and our citizens' values. With that being said, I really appreciate your efforts. And I'm going to support the project, because I don't want to negotiate something, and then I think it'd be in bad faith to turn it down when I receive that, you know, concession or that change. I mean, to me, every building should at least, at very least, be solar-ready. And there's so many opportunities with accelerated depreciation to make it worthwhile, even in this regulatory environment that is very prohibitive of rooftop solar. So I will support the project. I thank you for all the efforts, and I hope that we could have had more, but I do appreciate that at least we have that concession. And I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have a motion and a second.
Excuse me, Mayor and council, I just wanted to clarify for the record. The motion would be with the stipulation is read into the record.
Yep, you have to.
I move to approve item 6C1 with the stipulation that was read into the record.
Is there a second? Joel? Joel's second. All right. Thank you, Ms. Baumann, for keeping us on track. All right, there's been a motion and a second with the stipulation that was read into the record. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries six to zero.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item. That's it. All right, next item is our current events and council announcements and future agenda items. Councilmember Keating.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I should have a slide coming up here. That's not it, though. That's not it. That's Lauren. Wait, do I have my slide? All right, I emailed it to you this afternoon. There it is. Thank you so much. All right, so I had a campaign event on Sunday, and a little girl came up to me while I was in a parking lot and gave me this flyer. And they have lost their dog, Matty, and the dog's been missing for 22 days now. And I lost my beloved Yara for overnight once, and it was probably one of the worst nights of my life. So I can't imagine what this family's been going through. They're out there every day distributing these flyers, looking for their dog. They're having a big walk this Saturday, launching from Daily Park at 9:30. And they're going to be serving lunch to the volunteers that show up back at noon, all trying to find their Matty. And there's been sightings of her all over the city. So if you could help out finding, to help find this dog, please go to Daily Park this Saturday, February 29 at 9:30 a.m., collect some flyers, you know, drive through the alleys. I'm sure they'll have a whole search plan. But anyone who's ever lost a dog knows what they must be going through. And I really hope that they're able to bring home Matty safe. I actually shared this on my social media account on Sunday. I asked people to share, and I had 38 people to share it, and it reached over 5,000 people. So, you know, hopefully, they're able to find their dog. So please, if you could help out, you know, Tempe's a very tight-knit community, and I would hope that if anyone lost their dog, they were able to kind of come together and do what we can to find it. So please help bring Matty home this Saturday, 9:30 a.m. at Daily Park. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have a slide, I think, top one, batting cages. So, Saturday, March 7, noon to 3 p.m., Kiwanis Batting Range will be having people out there swinging for the fences for free. Help celebrate Kiwanis Batting Cage turns 30 on Saturday, March 7, from noon to 3 p.m. Check out all 10 batting cages featuring speeds from slow to fast pitch. Equipment will be provided. Food trucks will be on-site, and more details at tempe.gov/battincages. And you guys have a great time out there. I actually worked at that batting cage over a summer, and they made some definite upgrades. You used to get hit by those balls. Anyways, next one is...
Supposed to hit it.
Yeah. I just want to congratulate, I never got a chance to congratulate my son, Parker. He went through a ordeal of recruiting, and I have to say, he's very blessed, and the family's very blessed, him receiving a scholarship to University of Central Florida, UCF. And he'll be going out there this summer to play quarterback. Hopefully, we can get him in that starting position, but obviously, we got a good team. So I'm just wanting to tell you, my son, Parker, I'm very proud of him.
All right. Vice Mayor Kubi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, I had the honor of being invited by Clarence Anthony, who's the president of the National League of Cities, to attend a roundtable discussion where we launched the Principles of Home Rule for the 21st century. And not only the principles of home rule, but moving the principles of home rule for the 21st century into action. So you know, Tempe and many cities in Arizona are faced with preemption, the idea of legislative interference in our local democracies. This is not just an Arizona phenomenon, we see it happening all across the country. And there's a lot of people, including the Local Solution Support Center and the National League of Cities, who are alarmed at this increasing trend. And the last time there was a comprehensive effort to review this idea of home rule was back in 1953. So these principles were constructed, and the idea is we will, we need to look at structural reform, be it resolutions, statutes, maybe even a constitutional amendment in each of our states. And I hope that this document will also inform our legislative priorities as we define them every year before each legislative session. So I have copies of that that I will be giving to the council members and spreading through our Friday packet, so people can understand the depth of this threat. This is not just a threat in Arizona, as I mentioned, but across the country. We need to, the last bulwark of democracy are our cities. Our cities are innovators, and cause such innovation to bubble upward. And we need to make sure we can preserve home rule across, across the state and the country. And Barbara Moore here, I was at the meeting with her. She's pro-Tem from Saginaw, Michigan. She made some very unfortunate remarks about Lansing, Michigan, but...
Hey, she's not wrong. But Saginaw's no palisian.
Right. But she was an amazing advocate for her city and for local decision-making. Next. We all, a number of us were at the launch of the new IKEA kiosk, that the Integrative Kiosk Entertainment, I believe, stands. The first is at Seventh and Mill, and there's a profound amount of information on the kiosk. Think of it as a giant smartphone. It is through advertising. There'll be no cost to the city, and we'll actually have a number of pages dedicated to promoting city events and human services. And the key area that I'm focused on is air quality. You see Jenny Vanos there, who's from the urban, from Hugh. It's Healthy Urban Environments Program in Arizona State. And she is keenly interested in the air quality measurements that will take place. The IKEA records 15 different measurements, ranging from PM 2.5 to PM 10, to carbon monoxide, to carbon dioxide, to nitrous oxide. And this information, not all of that is available for the public to see, basically, see whether the air quality is good, poor, or fair. But scientists will be able to use this data and be able to look at air quality, for instance, before a haboob and after haboob. This is information that'll be real-time that they can use to really study air quality on a microscale level in our city. So I'm very excited about the IKEA for all the promotional opportunities, but for the science and the data that they'll bring to our city to make our city healthier. Next. So my Connecting with QB event is happening Saturday from 1 to 4 at the Library Connections Cafe. It's the last Saturday of every month, and I so enjoy meeting residents in a really informal setting, nothing programmed or scheduled, but an opportunity to sit down and hear in depth about neighborhood issues and city concerns. So I hope to see folks there on Saturday. And one more thing, thank you to the Friends of Papago Park. There was a cleanup in Papago Park, and Lasse Norgard Larson led the cleanup, and there was an amazing amount of trash collected. And despite the rain, they had to reschedule their event to the next day from Saturday to Sunday. And I just want to thank Lasse and all the Friends of Papago Park for their incredibly hard work this weekend. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first announcement is about Play Day, and I'll let the slide come up. There it is. So Play Day is this Saturday, also at Kiwanis. So I guess after you're done hitting balls at the batting cage, you can come on over and run, climb, boat, dance. There's something for everyone. And this is a free event to everyone, and it's made possible through the Tempe Diablos. So thank you, Tempe Diablos, for doing this event and making this possible. So come on out and enjoy a beautiful day on Saturday. The next announcement is Geek's Night Out. So Geek's Night Out is March 18, from 4:30 to 7:30 at the library complex. And that is, it's the ninth, I can't believe it's been nine years, but it's the Ninth Annual STEM Festival. So discover the science behind everyday things, as you explore more than 60 booths, featuring hands-on experiments and demonstrations. If you haven't attended, it's really a great event. It's very interactional, and bring your kids out, and it's a great way to learn all about science and technology. My third announcement is Spring Training. Spring Training has begun, and it's very exciting. And there were a lot of people there today for our volunteer recognition luncheon. And I really would encourage you, it's a great family event, it's inexpensive, and it's fun. And you can bring your family out for low costs. And the average stadium, or the average attendance is 7,500 fans every game. And it also is, promotes Tempe Diablo charities for the funds raised. So we put that money back into giving to our community. So please support Spring Training. Finally, my dear friend, Angie Taylor, who serves on the Development Review Commission, she served Tempe Sister Cities, Tempe Community Action. She's been very involved in the community throughout the years, and probably most of you know her in this room. She did have a heart condition, and she is on the road to recovery. And I wish her the very best and a speedy recovery. So thanks, Angie, if you're out there. That's all.
Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three quick announcements tonight, highlighting three individuals in our community, and all of them illustrate how small acts can make a big impact. The first one, a big shout-out to Annie Schick, who is a senior at Tempe High School. She had the great suggestion of using a QR code for our council meetings. So this will reduce our use of paper for council meetings for printed agendas. And using your smartphone, you can navigate online to the agendas pretty quickly and easily. The next one is a sad remembrance, but very important. Michelle Meyer, she served as president of the Evergreen Neighborhood Association, which happens to be my neighborhood association. Michelle was a recipient of the Neighbor of the Year Award in 2018 during the State of the Neighborhoods event. She gave countless hours to our community and was an inspiration. We had a memorial service in the neighborhood, and there was a great crowd. And we all, we all shared our memories of Michelle. And it was very simple. And she's, her work impacted many of us. So we will miss her. The third one is Charles Chuckley. He was, I think he was one of the original Los Pacinos. He was born and raised in an adobe home on Third Street. So he would have told you that his home should be a historic landmark. He was a small business owner. He worked on the Street Car Working Group, the Tempe Historic Preservation Commission, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and also has worked with Los Pacinos. He had a quiet leadership about him, unless you knew him, then he told you exactly what he thought. But he will also be missed. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a couple ones. Real quick, this weekend is the inning Real quick, this weekend is the Innings Festival on Saturday and Sunday. It's a great event for our community. And I got to tell you, hopefully you guys get out there, be safe, it's a great band, good lineup, so hopefully we see you all out there. I also want to mention that, it was mentioned briefly, we had our volunteer luncheon today at Diablo Stadium. We took all the volunteers out for, we took them out to the ballpark. And I got to tell you, it was so much fun to talk to so many of our volunteers, and believe it or not, we had over 2,500 community members volunteer in our community, which resulted in over 130,000 service volunteer hours for the city. But more importantly, that really equates to $3.35 million of savings to our community because of all the volunteers. And I really want to thank the volunteers and our staff, Denise Ressler and her team, for everything that they did to put this program on. It's just a small token to thank our volunteers, and it really goes a long way with, with our residents, because they feel part of the community. And it's so rewarding when people come up to me, or any of my council colleagues, like, oh, Tempe is a great city, we love being connected, you tell stories, people become friends from volunteering, and it really is that type of a city. It's, it's an inclusive, compassionate and caring city, and we're lucky that we have the amount of volunteers and the residents that we do have to make the city that we call home today, Tempe, and it's, it really is, is nice. With that, I don't have any other announcements, but I do have a, a comment for my council colleagues for a future agenda item. Some of us attended a meeting, a neighborhood meeting in South Tempe, and if there's a way that staff at a future agenda, a future meeting, works that it could come up with, that how we communicate certain projects in our neighborhoods, even though it may not warrant a notice to the residents, I think any, any change in any of the housing, housing opportunities in our neighborhoods, it'd be good if we, we looked at some of those opportunities for us. Because of short-term rentals and potential care facilities that are allowed in, in our neighborhoods, it'd be good that if we could have a, if we could review how we handle some of those events, I think it'd be very helpful for this council, and I would like to include potential parking issues, parking permits for certain, based on the neighborhood's decision. Also, you know, when it comes to a care facility, what does that look like for response times for our, our public safety personnel? Does it have an impact? So, that's something we should, come up with an idea. I'd like to sit with, with my colleagues at a work-study session, so we can really dive in to some of the opportunities that we have. Councilman Navarro.
Mayor, yeah, thanks. And I, I think I brought it up at the last meeting, work-study about communication.
Right.
And just how we go about it, and how we get notified, and how we keep on updating that communication and extending it. So I think they'll actually fall in line with that, too.
Okay. That's just something that's free for thought for us to get in there, to get a, try to be a little more communication out there. With that, I will close our comments and now go to public appearances. We do not have any scheduled public appearances, but do we have any unscheduled? Anyone who'd like to come up and make a comment? Seeing none? With that, we are adjourned.